All right, good afternoon. A call meeting of the Finance Committee to order is Monday, June 16th at 12 o'clock. Becca, if you could please read the role.
Pertle Guinea? Here. Novick?
Yeah.
Green?
Yeah.
Avalos? Present. Zimmerman?
Here. Christopher, if you could read the Statement of Conduct, please.
Welcome to the meeting of the Finance Committee. To testify before this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the committee agenda at www portland.gov/council/agenda/financedasscommittee or by calling 311. Information on engaging with the committee can be found at this link. Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior to the meeting. In-person testifiers must sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals may testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The chair preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or committee deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. If you're a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. This meeting in the Finance Committee will consider an ordinance proposing an amendment to the City Code which will introduce a temporary exemption to the system development charges for residential housing projects. And with that, you could call Item 1, please.
Amend System Development Charge Exemptions Code to add a temporary exemption for residential housing projects.
Great. So as Donnie and team come on up, colleagues, we're going to hear from the presentation first, then we do have some public comment today. And I'm going to limit public comment to no more than one hour to allow further discussion. I don't think we'll need that full hour, but if more folks do sign up, I'm going to limit it today to one hour. And then we'll get into back and forth questions, discussion, et cetera. Hope that works for everybody. And with that, DCA Olivera, please take it away.
All right, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, councilors. Donnie Olivera for the record. So, Council, this is an opportunity for us to have a larger conversation about what our dilemma is in the city of Portland related to the housing continuum. But I want to just acknowledge that this is not designed to solve for every challenge that ails us right now. It is not designed to be a one-size-fits-all solution. In fact, I would argue that it is picking up a very particular slice of our housing production deficit in a way that is not entirely inclusive of all of our challenges. And yet, laying that out, it is incredibly important that we take actions like this right now to send as strong a signal as possible to our development partners, our construction industry, our labor partners, that the city of Portland is doing everything within our power to activate the lull in housing production in the city of Portland. As you may know, our Housing Needs Analysis said that we are expected to produce approximately 5,200 units a year going forward. And built on the deficit that we've had over the past several years, that number's closer to 6,000. And in 2024, we only produced 800 units of market rate housing and are projected to produce that going forward for the next several years. That is clearly unacceptable in the middle of a housing crisis. So what we have for you today is a concept that was generated out of a working group convened by the Governor of Oregon, Tita Kotek, and Mayor Wilson that looked at several opportunities for us to leverage within the city of Portland's authority, this being the first for your contemplation. This is an exemption for system development charges for new units of housing produced in the city of Portland across the city. My colleague Christina will walk through the specifics of you. But as you think about this, again, it is a substantial maneuver for the city with some costs, and it is one of several different elements that we're working on related to permitting improvement, related to code improvement, and frankly, related to how we tell a different story about the city of Portland and our ability to get stuff built. And so with that, I would turn it over to Christina Gahn for the review of the deck. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Christina Gahn, further record, with Donnie Olivera in the community en active service area. Excellent. So today, we're going to do about 24 slides. They're pretty straightforward, so we'll try to go through them in good order to save plenty of time for discussion and questions and public testimony, do some quick background, go over the proposal, do an overview, discuss potential impacts that are also described in the impact statement with the legislation, and then very briefly go over next steps. All right, so for background, next slide. As Donnie just shared, I think we're no stranger to the challenges to building more housing right now. As Donnie mentioned, we had just over 800 units of market rate housing built last year. It's the lowest in over 10 years. That's all different types. That's a lot to support middle housing in Portland in the last many years. That's going well. Apartment construction, less so. So that really covers the full spectrum of new units produced that don't have those regulated affordability restrictions like some of PHB's finance projects do. And like you said, we're forecasting a really low level in the next three years, so about 2,500 total. We do have a lot of units in the queue right now. We'll go over that in a minute. Thousands of units that are somewhere in the permit process, but are, many of them, most of them, they're not full steam ahead right now because they cannot get the financing and the kind of the numbers to work for their projects. Next. So here's that slide of our current pipeline as of May. Again, you can see over 7,000 units in there. Most of those are in kind of multifamily apartment buildings, again, at various stages of the process. And this is a key piece of what this proposal is trying to kind of unlock, is the folks that are already talking to us, they already have ideas, they probably already have land, and they're trying to figure out how to make it work. And I think you might hear from some of those folks in testimony today. Next. Just very briefly, y'all know this is not the only thing we're doing to spur housing production. You know, we've done the permit reform work that Donnie mentioned, and many of you might be aware of the work to recalibrate the city's inclusionary housing program recently. We've got a whole housing production strategy that lists all kinds of stuff, including touching on how SDCs impact housing feasibility as well. We have a legislation coming to council this summer for other types of development code cleanup. We're always looking for more local resources to build regulated affordable housing. You know, that's a huge area of need with the expiration of our two local housing bonds. And of course, there's all sorts of innovative concepts. This is never a finished, done conversation, always taking ideas, including the recent social housing resolution that council passed. Next.
Christina, just as this gets a little complicated, I'm going to entertain questions as they come up with each of these slides. And Councilor Green, I know you had your hand up. Do you want to get back to that?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Can you go to Slide 5, please? Thank you. I wonder, so the subtitle here says building permit, applications under review or approved to issue. And I saw in the kind of draft track changes of the ordinance that this would not be eligible for permits that have already, or projects that have already been issued a permit. And so I wonder, how much of the numbers on the table would maybe be off the table for this benefit because they've already been approved a permit? Does my question make sense?
Yeah, so those 7,300, none of those have had their building permit issued yet. These are all ones that are earlier in the process.
Okay.
And part of that is because usually people pay their building permit, pay their permit fees, pay their SDCs, and then initiate construction pretty soon after. And we'll go over this in a minute, but typically, when we pass new legislation, it only applies to new projects that apply after the legislation goes into effect, given that there's a housing crisis, given that we know there are 7,000 units that are already underway. We didn't want to accidentally exclude those from being eligible, and so we tried to find the right balance of like where to kind of cut it off.
So here in the language, approved issues not the same as...
Issues. Exactly. It means all the reviews are done, literally balls in their court, they just got to like pay their fees and go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, one more slide, Angela. Great, all right. As Donnie mentioned, the origin of this really was from those conversations with the mayor and governor and their multifamily housing work group. I think you might hear from some of those folks during public testimony. Just going to really quickly tell you, like, we know it's expensive to build housing, no stranger to this committee on that issue. We know that that shortage of housing leads to rising housing prices, which contributes to homelessness, gentrification, displacement, all the things that we as a community have been grappling with for over a decade, no stranger to this conversation. We know that the development industry and construction in Portland is not in a good place right now. We're many years from our previous market peak, and that as a city, we can't do everything, but we do control some levers and some tools. And so looking at really what we can do to help improve that. And so really, the goals of this work were to get our projects in our pipeline moving forward, as well as provide a pathway for people that are really eager to invest in Portland and want to bring in projects like right away to be able to do so. So that kind of helped inform the three years. And of course, recognizing that this is a public subsidy, there are trade-offs, and so balancing that need for more housing with, you know, loss of revenues for our infrastructure needs as a city. Next. Did some kind of targeted engagement to the development community, mainly to make sure that like what we put together actually makes sense and works. And so had a variety of conversations with those folks to understand some of the financials and get input on the concept. And then obviously, a lot of coordination within the city. I never want to skip this kind of information because it's helpful to know who all we're talking to, and that a lot of different folks kind of contributed their technical expertise to make this happen. Of course, the Budget Office and the City Economist, and then the Attorney's Office as well. Next. Very ominous, like dong, whatever.
Yeah, we can go half a year without hearing that bell, and today, you're in the middle of a presentation.
I love it. I'll take it. I used to live near church, so it's all good. Okay, so very briefly, I'm not an expert on system development charges, but I've talked to a lot of them in the last couple of months, and there are money in the room behind me. And so if there are questions about this at some point, we'll kind of defer to those folks. But high level, they're collected as part of the permit process for new development. They provide resources to expand our infrastructure, to support sewer water parks and transportation needs. They vary. Each bureau sets their SDCs according to their own methodologies. But on average, and a lot of them depend on the scale of the housing, the number of faucets, et cetera, et cetera, but they range from $15,000 to $35,000 in Portland per unit and about $20,000 average. We have a couple of programs at the city over the years to waive and defer those for certain types of development. So we've kind of been grappling with this tension for a while now. Any regulated kind of permanent affordable housing qualifies for an SDC exemption, and PHB administers that. Also, for many years, we've had an SDC waiver available for homeownership units that agreed to sell the to income-restricted households at middle income. And then we have an ADU waiver for accessory dwelling units, as long as they promise not to operate them as short-term rentals for a while afterward. And of course, there's a pathway for office-to-housing conversions. And so as council and city priorities have adjusted, we have sort of modified options for SDC waivers and deferrals. We also have opportunities for them to still pay them, but pay it a little bit later in their permit and construction process, including a recent option for a two-year delay without interest, and that's going to expire soon. So great, we can keep going through. Thank you, Angela. So now an overview of the proposal. These are for amendments to Title 17 of the City Code. Go next. Awesome. So we're waiving SDCs for new housing for three years to help create 5,000 units. We're just going to go into the weeds a little bit here, so bear with me. Again, I'll skim over them if you want to go into more detail on questions, we can. We define this as new housing units and new congregant living facilities. What is housing is like a whole thing that our technical experts know a lot better than me. So we define it as that. Again, all types of housing, detached, single-family, middle housing, and apartments. We had to make a judgment call on things like dorms and livework and assisted living facilities, and most of those would fall in as well, as long as we're not doing basically medical, you know, operating as hospitals. And then they can be located in a new building, in an addition that's creating new housing, or in a conversion, so like an office-to-housing conversion project. It does not include, if you're not building a new unit, you're not eligible if you're planning on operating that housing as transient lodging. And again, like I said before, if you're doing too much medical stuff, and that would be a different type of activity, so it wouldn't be eligible for the exemption. Next.
But regular condominiums would fall into the apartment category in this?
Exactly. Sorry, yeah, an apartment is a building type, not an ownership structure. Yeah, good question. Okay, all right. So what would be waived? All types of SDCs, so transportation, parks, water, sewer, and stormwater. We have a lot of mixed-use buildings in Portland, as I'm sure you all know, like five stories of apartments above, and then like a ground floor retail, whatever. For those types, in most instances, we can just split out, and we would exempt the residential above, but they would still pay the SDCs on the commercial or whatever it is down below. There's only one exception for that, for our stormwater, because they just do that based on the total previous area. But for most of them, it's really easy to divide up, so the legislation kind of allows people to still pay on those commercial pieces. In terms of the timing, as Councilor Green kind of refers to your question, it can be new projects coming in the door or those that are currently in our pipeline, as long as their building permit has not been issued by the effective date. The goal here is not to be refunding SDCs that have already been paid for projects. We're trying to keep that nice and clean in the legislation. And this is a temporary program, so they need to have their building permit issued within three years of the effective date in order to receive the exemption. And then another piece that is not always typical in legislation is that we have an enforcement mechanism in the ordinance that projects need to proceed with construction in order to receive the exemption, and we'll go into that more on the next slide. Okay. Acknowledging that it is not free or cheap to take a, you know, project through building permit review, right? You have to hire architects, designers, draw up all the technical plans, show where the water pipes are going to go, all of that. And so applicants typically have invested significant resources into a project by the time they get to their building permit being issued. That being said, we've heard very loud and clear that there's interest in making sure that people build now because our housing crisis we're experiencing now in Portland is very acute. And so we have a proposed approach in the ordinance to ensure that people do actually start construction. And so as it's drafted now, projects need to reach their foundation or their concrete pour inspection within one year after their building permit is issued. If they don't reach that codified checkpoint in time, we have the authority to ask them to pay their exempted SDCs, and we have the authority to withhold their certificate of occupancy if they like to make sure that that happens. And that's kind of one of the latest things that happen in the permit process is we issue their C of O. We also have, for some projects that have really kind of sophisticated agreements with their lenders, an option for them to submit as part of their permit process and execute a construction agreement with their lender that basically they're promising to their lender to open the building in a certain amount of time. And so that would be another pathway for them to comply with that construction requirement. Next. Okay, so a couple scenarios. You know, these are examples, so please don't come up to me afterward saying this should take 14 months, not 16, but this is intended to help kind of illustrate the different, three different scenarios for how a project might move through this exemption, starting off with one that already is in our pipeline, meaning they already have applied. On this slide, it says they applied back in May 2022, and this is one that kind of has just been waiting to see what happens. They might be an approved to issue right now. And so under this scenario, if the code goes into effect, they might, within a very short order, be able to get their building permit issued, start with construction by fall next year, have their foundation inspection completed, and then the building will be done a little while after that. You can see that all happens well within the kind of three years of the proposed timeline for the ordinance. And then in the next scenario, this is a much smaller project, just like a four-unit middle housing project that's just getting started right now. So they're hearing this presentation, they're thinking, wow, this is amazing. They get started on their design work. Thank you for the laugh, counselor. They submit their building permit application, they get their control of the property, all the things they need to do on their end. They submit their building permit application early next year, it gets issued, they begin construction, obviously much shorter construction timelines, it's a much smaller project, and they're all done, you know, with the whole project well before the end of the three years is over. And then in our third scenario, this is a 70-unit apartment building that's just getting started. This one's a little bit tighter, right? Because it's a bigger project, so everything takes longer. So they might already be in design, they might already have their eye on a property, but they have not submitted their building permit application yet. If they can do that, you know, early next year, get their permit issued about a year after that, begin construction, and then they're reaching their foundation and concrete inspection in that appropriate amount of time under the legislation. And then you'll see that they, in this scenario, they get their construction completed a little bit after the end of the three years, but because of the way we have it drafted, not a problem for this project. Okay, next slide. This is just a summary, a kind of a visual, I'm a very visual person, so this is a visualization of that timeline that we talked about. So you can see day one is legislation going into effect, day three is the end of that three-year temporary period. That's the very last building permit with this exemption could be issued, you know, then. And then they have the additional one year to reach that construction stage. So this is like the slowest possible, the latest possible timeline that a project could qualify for this program, if that's helpful. Okay, next. All right, now we're going to go into impacts. This is the less, this is the less fuzzy, warm, well, there are some things that are good, the more complex piece, let's say. So acknowledging that this program is specifically intended to improve development feasibility, we obviously put some thought into that piece. I mentioned before how much the average SDCs cost. We have, we're very fortunate at the city to have staff in BPS that have economic analysis expertise, and they were already working on some pro forma models for a different project that they were doing, so they were really easily be able to just kind of update their models and model this concept specifically. And so they looked at 22 different housing types, kind of theoretical concepts around the city, and they plugged in the estimated SDCs, and then they removed them under the proposal to see how much that helped the projects out. In general, the value of the SDCs is about 3% to 8% of the total development cost. And they found that, first of all, this building is really expensive, everyone knows that. There are a lot of decisions that go into how buildings are designed that influence just how expensive it is. So are they using concrete and steel? Are they building a huge five-story parking basement garage, right? Like, all these different things impact it. And so that showed up in the pro formas for how effective this tool was. So what we found is that for the apartment buildings that are kind of in the like medium, small, I don't know, medium-ish size, let's just say medium, whatever that means, 300 to 200 units in areas of the city where the kind of the rents, you know, work, that are designed with wood frame construction, and they can, you know, avoid some of those higher-cost parking structures, this actually is enough to, in many instances, get them across the finish line. Same goes for kind of four-plex middle housing projects. Again, they're already pretty cheap to build, and even though they're struggling now, that 3% to 8% additional from this program would be enough to make their financials much better than they are now. We have other types of projects that are doing concrete, steel, expensive parking, those types of things that have huge feasibility gaps, 10%, 20%, 30% or more. And even with a little 3% to 8% bump, it's not going to be enough to make them all work. So acknowledging that not everyone's going to probably, you know, seize forward with this, but everyone would be eligible to receive it. Looking at what this could do in terms of numbers, you know, we know we have the 2,500 to be expected to see, and we looked at our current pipeline. Again, we're not trying to assume that every single project is going to spring forward, so we thought it was very reasonable to assume that we could expect 4,000 or more, and obviously the goal set in the code is 5,000 units for this program. Next. All right, this is just, I mean, a real development project, and I think it's always helpful to like talk in specifics, not, you know, I think the modeling, theoretical modeling is really helpful. And also, we did a lot of targeted outreach to the developers to understand what this meant for their projects, and they were very generous, sharing information with us. This is a 76-unit wood frame apartment building off of Interstate, near a train line, and this is just one of those projects that is in that sweet spot where the SDCs that they would be exempted under the program, 6%, you know, would be enough to help them move forward. And it just gives a little information on their construction window and kind of how they would benefit from the program. Okay, next. So again, honing in on that same data from before, this is just the subset of those housing units that are kind of the right scale that we think. housing units that are kind of the right scale that we think would most benefit. We can move on from that, with several thousand units potentially. And then here we get to the trade-offs conversation, right? Like, this is a public incentive, and those revenues go toward important public purposes. And so we had a really helpful conversations with our SDC Bureau colleagues about how they charge SDCs, what they expect, what they're forecasting for the future. The, I mean, the bad news is that we aren't expecting much housing, like, that's the bad news. The good news from a SDC revenue perspective is that that means we're not giving up very much. I wish that, you know, I'll leave it to y'all to say whether that's good or not good at balancing the scales, but, so we modeled those units we're expecting to see otherwise, and with the technical expertise of those folks, came up with some estimated, you know, reduced revenue for them, which, I'm not going to read them all because we have them on the slide, but obviously for some bureaus is somewhat significant. We did not include units that would be stimulated beyond those 2,500, because that sort of is a stimulated, you know, demand. And so the trade-off for that isn't quite the same as it is for units that we know we're going to see otherwise. And then we have folks in the room certainly who can answer questions about any impacts on the delivery of future existing capital projects and how those resources are used for public infrastructure needs for the city. All right, next slide. Other impacts. Y'all may know, any apartment buildings over 20 units are subject to the city's inclusionary housing policy, meaning that they have to help build new regulated, permanent, affordable rental units in Portland. And so any projects that receive this exemption that are private sector, that go forward, most of them economically are starting to opt to build those 60% AMI units, the kind of the lower-income units for inclusionary housing. And so we would see an increase in the number of affordable units created through inclusionary housing as part of this. That's one kind of important benefit. On the other note, we do currently have a homeownership incentive program through the Housing Bureau for those middle-income housing units. I'm just gonna, I think it's safe to assume that people will give an option to receive an SDC waiver for, you know, for restricting the sales price, and then an SDC exemption for not restricting sales price, are probably going to choose to not have to restrict the sales price, so we would see some reduced participation in that. So it's, again, just trying to be transparent about some of the trade-offs here. And then finally, just acknowledging the significance of the real estate development and construction industry, and how important that is for Portland's overall, you know, workers and jobs and economy, and that anything we can do to help support this industry is helpful for many Portlanders as well. All right, next. All right, last slide. We did it. Here we are, a finance committee meeting. Obviously, you know, if y'all are supportive of moving this forward, then the next step would be full council. We have a policy on the books in Portland that encourages the city to not have a revolving door of regulations going into effect all the time. And so what that says is try to only have stuff go into effect twice a year, in March and October. And so we put in that default date of October 1st as the effective date in the legislation. The council is interested. You could adjust that to the standard 30 days after adoption, just wanted to acknowledge that that is why we have October 1st in here as drafted. And then assuming it goes forward and goes into effect, then the Bureau would likely do some, the bureaus would likely do some administrative rules to help implement it. And that ends the presentation.
Great. That was very thorough, and appreciate it. You posed some good questions. I'm going to have you both step away while we go to public comment at this point. And I'll just note, it is 12:30, and I don't think we'll need the full hour, but we'll go till 1:30 if we need it with public comment. One quick question.
One quick question. Looking at the proposed language, it says if the dwelling unit or a concrete living facility is part of a development that includes a mix of both dwelling units and other uses or occupancies, the entire development is exempt from SDCs. I'm just wondering, what could that, what could happen under that? Could we have like a huge doggy daycare facility with one attached studio apartment, and that would all be waived?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And I think, Counselor, I think I sort of skimmed over that piece really quickly. It's, there are just two SDCs that would be waived for the whole building, and that's because they're really hard to break out according to the use. And so one of those is the stormwater SDCs. It's just based on the, again, I'm not the expert, but it's based on the impervious area. And so just literally like how much hard surface there is in the building. And so it's not really practical to be able to split out doggy daycare versus the one housing unit.
But might you want to have sort of a limit on the extent to which the facility is like 90% non-dwelling unit and 10% dwelling unit, even for that limited exemption?
We did consider that. We, I think we included an exception for, as an example of this, for caretaker's quarters, which is like if you add one dwelling unit in an industrial piece of property. So that was our way of kind of making sure there wasn't a weird loophole for that. We discussed a bit the concept of having, you know, a limit on the proportion of a building. I'll just be, I'll just be, like, a lot of it came down to the complexity of implementing and administering that kind of rule, because then you now have to start asking every applicant for every housing project in the city to like share the split of, you know, spaces by, and so it just became kind of a practicality. Our staff weren't too concerned that that was going to be a common thing. We might also be able to handle it via an administrative rule if that starts to become an issue.
Thank you.
Great. We can go ahead and call three up at a time. That would be wonderful.
First, we have Augustine Enriquez V., Michelle Schultz, and Isaac Ambruso. And Michelle is on the line.
Great. Michelle, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Finance Committee Councilors. Thank you so much for listening to our testimony today. My name is Michelle Schultz. I'm a licensed architect, principal, and owner at GBD Architects. We're proud to be headquartered in District 4, and our firm has been designing projects in Portland for over 54 years. We've had the privilege of shaping the city's skyline, neighborhoods, and public spaces across generations, but in recent years, we've seen a troubling slowdown in housing development, driven in part by financial barriers that make it increasingly difficult to get projects off the ground. As a Portland business owner, I've built my career, and we've built our company around the belief that this is a city worth investing in. We want to continue doing our work here, creating the housing, communities, and public spaces that define Portland. But more and more, our work is being pushed outside the city, and even outside the state, because that's where the projects are able, actually able to get built. That's where the math works, and the momentum exists. We want to reverse the trend. We need this action now. That's why I'm strongly supporting the temporary exemption of system development charges for residential projects. This measure isn't just about lowering costs, it's about removing key hurdles that are preventing much-needed housing from moving forward. The SDC waiver will have an immediate impact on shovel-ready projects that currently don't pencil. It's a powerful tool to unlock housing production, retain local jobs, and restore confidence in Portland's development pipeline. We're seeing firsthand how stalled projects affect not only our teams and clients, but the small businesses, neighbors, and communities waiting for change. This is a practical, time-limited solution that signals to investors, developers, and residents alike, Portland is serious about building housing and open for business. Let's move for plans of action. Thank you for your leadership and for considering this important step towards Portland's recovery.
Thank you. Go right ahead. You can introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Zimmerman, members of the Finance Committee. My name is Isaac Ambruso, and I am the Deputy Director of Government Affairs for the Oregon Homebuilding Association. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today in strong support of this SDC exemption. Since 2015, the city of Portland has declared a housing emergency six times, which you acknowledge in this bill, yet despite this, housing production has steadily declined. In 2024, only 818 market-rate housing units were produced, which is far short to meet the need of projected demand of 120,000 new homes by 2045. Today, you'll hear from builders and developers, many of them members of HBA, whose projects are stalled, and those projects bring new homes, new families, and new investment into Portland, but simply don't pencil under the current cost burden. The reality is that supply matters. Austin, Texas, often seen as a political cousin to Portland, took bold action to boost multifamily housing, including issuing permits at a rate of 64 and 1/2 units per 10,000 residents. The result of that was that median rents dropped nearly 9% year over year. If we want affordability, we must increase supply. It's really that simple. Concerns about short-term revenue loss are understandable, but let's be honest, the pipeline has already slowed to a trickle. If we do nothing, SDC revenues will remain depressed regardless of the choices of this committee and the broader council, and they will continue to decline over time. This exemption won't cause a slowdown, it's our best shot at reversing it. This is a targeted, temporary policy to get Portland building again, and if we're serious about addressing affordability issues and economic stagnation, we need to remove barriers that prevent new housing from moving forward. On behalf of the Oregon Homebuilding Association, I urge you to adopt this ordinance without unnecessary restrictions or new bureaucratic hurdles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Mitchoff, Michael Hamilton, and Cameron Chester.
Whoever's first, you can introduce yourself and get right started.
If we're going in that order. Okay. My name is Mike Mitchoff. I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Portland. I live over in southeast, in Westmoreland. I'm basically fourth generation on the same exact property and the same exact house, and I care about Portland a lot. I also happen to be a builder, investor, I don't like to use the term developer, but I create community here in Portland, and I'm really proud of it. I served on the Residential Infill Project Stakeholder Committee between 2017 and 2020, and I'm just here, you've already heard most of the arguments, but I'm here to say that the, I already participate in the SDC waiver program along with the WHOLTE program. And for all the things that we hear about, I could list, I could go on and on about things we could do better, but I can tell you, those two programs work, and they're great. And I'm happy, like, I just sold two houses last week in southeast Portland where homeowners got into houses that they probably wouldn't, I can't say specifically in this situation, but probably wouldn't have been able to qualify otherwise. And so I'm here to say that this program works, exempting SDC works. So I'll take you back 15, 20 years when we started to exempt ADU SDCs. Just look, look at what it did to the volume of production. So it's really, in my opinion, it's really simple, but it's a step in the right direction, and it's something I think we can all be proud of. We're going to look back in three years, and hopefully the numbers will justify what we've done here. But I believe in Portland, and I think this is a step in the right direction, and we all have an opportunity to participate in it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Cameron Chester. I'm here today in support of the SDC moratorium. I work as an employee for a local developer. We focus on small residential infill, it's called DBS Group. The majority of our projects are between about four and 30 units, and they include a mix of both rental housing and for-sale housing. Our team is made up of Portland natives, and we really care about how our work impacts the city. We currently have three rental projects totaling 17 units throughout the city that are in preissuance that we can't pull today because they're not economically feasible. We've done some analysis, and if a program like this were to pass, we would be able to pull those right away and get started on those. These projects consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units in the Elliott, Creston, Kennelworth, and North Tabor neighborhoods with rents expected to be between $1,400 a month and $2,200 a month. So we think this is going to be workforce housing, kind of targeting that 80% area median income level. Just as an example, one of these projects consists of five modestly-sized, one-bedroom housing units that would be for rent near Providence Portland Hospital in northeast. We think this will be an ideal project for members of our community to live near their job, be able to walk to work, and have, you know, a new, really nice housing. The passage of this program is going to allow projects like that to move forward. We aren't building luxury units or large federally-funded multifamily developments that rely heavily on public subsidy. We're a local, private developer, and with your help, we could get these projects across the line. Temporarily waiving these SDCs are going to help private developers like us deliver the much-needed housing supply that the governor, the mayor, and the city's looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Well, hello, City Council members. My name is Michael Hamilton. I'm the President of Seneca Development, a Portland-based housing developer that focuses on multifamily development. I'm here today to voice my strong support for the proposed measure, a targeted measure that addresses one of the most persistent barriers to housing production, financial feasibility. Developers like us are not looking for handouts, we're simply asking for tools, and this measure is a powerful tool. SDCs often account for 10% of a project's total budget, and unlike labor, materials, or debt, they're not tied to market conditions. They're one of the few cost levers the city controls. This temporary waiver is a practical, time-bound tool that can restore feasibility and bring stalled projects back online. Today, construction costs are at historic highs, interest rates have more than doubled in the last two years, and against that backdrop, SDC fees, often ranging from $20,000 to $30,000 per unit, are frequently tipping, are the tipping point between a viable project and one that stalls. At Seneca, we have felt this firsthand. None of our six multifamily projects in our pipeline totaling 500 units are currently financially feasible. The economics simply do not work, and as a result, we are unable to secure funding to start construction. Now let me be clear, this is not about waiting for a better market. The capital markets, both equity and debt, will not fund projects that don't pencil. But since this SDC waiver measure was announced a few weeks ago, we have received multiple term sheets from bona fide financial institutions to fund our projects. Three of them are now positioned to break ground this year, contingent on this waiver being implemented. This proposal is already having real-world impact. It's unlocking capital and reshaping the perception of Portland. Our capital partners, many of which are not Portland-based, view this legislation as a clear sign that Portland is serious about housing again and open for business. Removing these fees does more than unlock delayed development, it directly improves affordability, accelerates delivery timelines, and expands access to quality housing for Portlanders. At Seneca, we are not just advocating, we are pledging to deliver at least 10% of the city's 5,000-unit goal, a minimum of 500 new homes within the next 36 months. And with continued partnership and momentum, we believe we can exceed that. These aren't theoretical commitments, our projects are in active pre-development and design, and at least half of which will be permit-ready by quarter three of this year. The only remaining barrier is financing, and with this waiver in place, we will break ground immediately, not in two years, not after another market cycle, but now. The SDC proposal is exactly the kind of bold, collaborative, and time-sensitive action Portland needs. It's not permanent, it's not open-ended, it's purpose-driven, and it's clear, and it has a clear return, more homes built faster by teams like ours who are deeply invested in the city's future. We are ready to build, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you all for taking time to come up today. I'm going to call the next three.
Augustine Enriquez V.
My name is Augustine Enriquez V., and I'm a principal at GBD Architects. We are an architecture, interiors, and planning design firm located in downtown Portland since our founding in 1969. Our firm employs 57 people, and we've had the good fortune of being recognized as leaders in the design of mixed-use urban developments in Portland with new housing as the foundational element in creating the kind of neighborhoods we all want to live, work, shop, and recreate in. We have designed thousands of new apartments and condominiums in Portland over the years, and it was common for us to have hundreds of new housing units under design in any given year at our firm. During the last few years, during a housing shortage and affordability crisis in Portland, the volume of that work locally has reduced significantly. Where we used to have multiple new apartment Where we used to have multiple new apartment buildings and condos under design, we now have very few. I'm here today to offer my support for a temporary waiver of system development charges for new housing. There are many factors that contribute to the drastic reduction in new housing being developed in Portland. The primary challenge we hear from our clients is the total cost to develop new housing simply exceeds what it's worth at the end. Cost of construction, interest rates, or unnecessarily complex or expensive requirements are some of those challenges. Some of them are beyond the ability for council to address, but some are not. Temporarily exempting SDCs is a great tool at your disposal, and thank you very much for considering it. I would also offer to please consider additional measures, whatever they may be. We are experiencing a housing crisis and have been for many years. As many measures and tools as council can deploy to increase housing production, please consider. The more, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can call three up at a time if we can.
Ian McKenzie, Joseph Petrusic, Jordan Bass. Ian is online.
Mr. McKenzie, go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Ian McKenzie. I'm a senior associate at TVA Architects, where I specialize in the design of multifamily housing. We have designed thousands of units in Portland, and I can say that what TVA is experiencing in the market is exactly what you heard from Michelle and Augustine at GBD Architects. I'm also a volunteer for Portland Neighbors Welcome, and while I'm not speaking on their behalf today, I do want to draw your attention to a letter that they submitted in support of the temporary SDC waiver. I think we should take a moment to realize that the ordinance before you today probably wouldn't have happened without charter reform. In the old system, commissioners in charge were incentivized to look out for the interests of their bureaus above all else. A measure like this, which does have trade-offs, but which I believe is good for the city as a whole, wouldn't have been able to get the votes to move forward. And while I think it could be tempting to focus on the short-term foregone revenue, in the spirit of the new form of government, I think we should take time to add up all the benefits to the city if this measure is successful. Most obviously, it will generate lots of new units of housing, including affordable units via inclusionary housing, at a time when the Housing Bureau's funds are exhausted. The building permit fees generated will help avoid even deeper cuts to staffing at Portland Permitting and Development. In the private sector, the design and construction of these units will keep a lot of people employed who might otherwise be looking for work as our construction pipeline continues to dwindle. The residents of the new buildings will help activate our downtown and our neighborhood main streets. That supports our economy and also our public safety. Once these new buildings come onto the tax rolls, they will generate unrestricted property, excuse me, unrestricted property tax revenue for the city, county, and our school districts. The new buildings will be built to the standards of the Stormwater Management Manual, which means less water going into the combined sewer system and therefore fewer overflows into the Willamette River. The new buildings will rebuild sidewalks and with the new street trees and ADA compliant corners at no cost to the city. For the first time in years, I'm hearing from developers that they are interested in moving forward with new projects in Portland, but only if this measure passes. I urge you to vote this out of committee as soon as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ian. Go right ahead.
Hello. My name is Joseph Petrusic. I'm the president and founder of Savvy Development. We are a workforce housing provider in the Portland metro area. We have three multifamily projects currently in the permitting process for a total of seventy-two units. They have been on pause for over a year, and will continue to be on pause unless the SDC waiver passes. If the waiver passes, all these projects will move forward immediately, with the first one breaking ground a few weeks after the waiver goes into effect. To quote Counselor Novick, "The only sure way to get housing prices down for everyone is to build a lot more housing." According to the Housing and Urban Development Database in the city of Portland, exactly zero multifamily buildings pulled their permit in April of this year. In March, it wasn't much better. One duplex and one heavily taxpayer-funded multifamily project broke ground. The city is on pace to start construction on only about five hundred multifamily units in 2025. This is a local issue and a recent issue. In 2025, the city of Austin, Texas, has started construction on nine-point-eight times the amount of multifamily units that Portland has. As recently as 2017, Portland was keeping pace with Austin, Texas, and started construction on sixty-five-hundred multifamily units, which is thirteen times what we were on pace for in 2025. I bring up Austin, Texas, because it's a model of success, it has strong population growth, strong job growth, and due to policies that encourage housing construction, multifamily rents are down seventeen percent cumulatively from their 2022 peak. We have fallen severely behind our peer cities, and our city is dramatically underperforming its former self. Waiving SDCs is an effective way to encourage an increase in new housing construction. So again, quote Counselor Novick, let's ask the hard questions about what's cost-effective and what isn't. The last multifamily project to break ground in Portland was an affordable housing project that relied heavily on taxpayer dollars and received one-hundred-and-sixty thousand per unit from the Portland Housing Bureau. SDCs are about twenty thousand for each multifamily unit in Portland. That is one-eighth the amount the Portland Housing Bureau provided to fund the latest affordable housing project. Multifamily buildings with twenty or more units are subject to the city's inclusionary housing law and are required to incorporate affordable housing into their projects. Multifamily buildings with nineteen or fewer units are almost always workforce housing projects that are market rate, don't receive taxpayer funding, and are affordable for people making fifty-five to eighty-five percent of median family income. Waiving SDCs is an efficient use of taxpayer funds to stimulate new housing construction. In addition, each additional housing unit that is created as a result of the SDC waiver doesn't cost a city a cent of foregone revenue, as that revenue was going, never going to be collected with or without the SDC waiver. I urge you to vote in favor of the SDC waiver, and I urge you to have it take effect immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
My name is Jordan Bass. I'm a Portland resident and vice president of development at Deacon Development. I've been an architect and a developer in Portland for twenty-five-plus years. I'm here today to urge this committee and the city council to be bold and support housing of all types by approving this waiver. As we know, Portland's in a housing crisis and a housing emergency. Housing production is at a historic low. We must be bold and produce more housing for all and address this shortage in affordability. At Deacon Development, we're, we have units that are in the numbers you've seen before of units that are on the shelf, ready to break ground. We have over a couple hundred units that are shovel-ready, and we'll start as soon as this waiver can go into effect. We're deeply committed to Portland. It's the city where we live, we raise our families, and where we work. We want to be a partner with the city in addressing the housing shortage. We want to be a partner in the solution, but we must, it must be a partnership. The current development headwinds are enormous. We need a signal from the city and from you all that Portland is open for business and is encouraging development and housing production. The development community is ready to build. You see the numbers of the housing projects that are ready to go. They're designed, they're impermitting, we're all shovel-ready, the construction community is shovel-ready, our labor groups are ready to build. We need support from the city council and from you all to move this waiver forward. So I urge you, please act boldly, approve this waiver, and let's get building and building housing for all.
Kristy White, Gus Baum, and Anselm Fusco. Kristy's online. Kristy, you can go ahead.
Hello, I am Kristy White. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
I live in District Three. I am a land use attorney building housing projects in this city for the past thirty years. This is the only period of time in those thirty years that I don't have a single project in Portland with a crane in the air. And what does that signal? It signals an even bigger hole on the horizon, and here is why. In Portland, it takes, as you saw from the slides, three to four years to get from project conception to occupancy. That is the timeline for design, land use review, building permit, and construction. A project that starts into that queue today will not deliver units for three to four years, and these badly needed projects are not even in the queue today. Some are, as you saw from the slides, but we need more than those units to climb out of this gaping housing crisis. Some of these projects cannot get past step one. This SDC waiver is a must, a critical city action that will help housing projects advance past step one and add new supply and occupancy as soon as possible. This city does not have boundless options to affect change, but you have one very powerful tool: the power of the PIN. You can ink a temporary waiver of SDCs and accomplish, or at least incentivize, more units at all income levels. We know that when we increase supply, rents drop and sale prices drop. The small and temporary decrease in SDC revenue will be offset by permitting fees that are currently anemic, increases in property tax revenue, new resident spending, less spending on the housing crisis, positive economic multipliers in the architectural field, contractors, laborers, engineers, national investor interests that will beget more investor interest. Cranes in the air will build momentum and get us moving forward. Please support this temporary waiver, and thank you for taking this testimony and moving towards this bold action.
Thank you. Sure, you can go right ahead.
We have Gus Baum online. Gus, you can go ahead.
Hello. My name is Gus Baum. I'm a director of development for Security Properties, a multifamily developer based in the Pacific Northwest. I've also lived in the same ten-block radius of southeast Portland in District Three since nineteen ninety-five. In that time, I have seen the full spectrum of Portland's growth and struggles with regards to dense urban housing. I've personally delivered, in the past ten years with Security Properties, one thousand forty-seven units of market and affordable housing in award-winning projects that highlight the best of what Portland wants and needs in urban development. Others have stated that this past year, the city delivered just eight-hundred-and-eighteen units of housing, a new low in the past decade in production. Twenty-five percent of those I personally delivered in my Splash Apartments, built out a portion of the former Pepsi site at Twenty-seventh and Northeast Sandy. My three-hundred-and-forty-one-unit Press Box Development in Goose Hollow will deliver in October, and when we took their tower crane down last month, I'm afraid that it is the last high-rise apartment building that Portland will see for the foreseeable future. The impact of the SDC waiver in front of you today cannot be overstated in how our funders, investors, capital, and new investments view our city, our region, and our pro formas. This is not a giveaway to developers. We are in a housing crisis, and the fall of, we're falling far behind our peer and aspirational cities in housing production. My Pepsi Phase B plan with one-hundred-and-sixty units of market and affordable housing next door to Splash on Sandy Boulevard is designed and titled and in for permit, but it does not work financially, and my partners have put it on hold until market conditions improve. The three-to-four million dollars in SDCs that Pepsi B would incur is a huge barrier to the pro forma when we have seen little relief in construction pricing, interest rates. When interest rates remain high and the macroeconomic forces are far from helping us in our endeavors, everything from tariffs to weak job growth and continued reputational damage from the COVID pandemic make Portland a risky place to invest for many of our capital partners. A strategy session last week, held at my request, showed that with the SDC waiver, the path for Pepsi B has a pathway forward to go. Without it, it does not. I urge you to support this important ordinance and approve this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi. Good evening, council. Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Anselm Fusco. I am managing director with the Holland Partner Group. We build apartment buildings up and down the West Coast and have been active in this market, delivering over five thousand units over the past fifteen or so years. I also live in northeast Portland, and in my capacity as a board member of Oregon Smart Growth, was a part of the recently convened Governor's Multifamily Task Force, where we looked at a lot of, a lot of ways to try and stimulate the production of larger scale and smaller scale, but of multifamily housing in the market. We're here, I'm here to testify in support, obviously, and I think you've heard a lot about why, and I agree with pretty much everything that's been said, but to say it, there are two basic things that this does, one of which is it makes projects more affordable. Ours, our business, a lot of things involved, but unfortunately, a pretty dispassionate financial analysis underpins what we and our investment partners see and how we view the world, and the reality is reducing project costs changes how we are able to see and advocate for projects, and it changes the appetite of investors to participate. The other thing that this does, related to this notion of investors, is it sends a strong signal to what is a national investment community whom we need in order to build more of our apartment buildings in Portland. This action by council sends a signal to that community that you appreciate the complexity and frankly, the severity of the challenges that we face, and that you are partners in finding a way for all of us to get the multifamily sector moving forward again. I can't overstate the importance of this. One thing that was mentioned, which I would like to reiterate a little bit on this notion of foregone revenue, it's important for everyone to keep in mind that SDC fees are only paid when a project moves forward, and as you've heard from several folks, you know, the cranes are all down, and they don't come back until we can make things pencil. There will be no SDC fees in the absence of math that works, and so the intent of this, which we fully laud, is to create an opportunity for all of us to work together to get things started again. So the last thing I would say is, this, the other thing that I really appreciate about this is that it represents a collaborative spirit of problem-solving, and, you know, I would like to think that this is sufficient to kind of get everything going again. I don't know that it will be, but it's a great first step, and it's indicative of the kind of working together that I think is gonna help us all get to the point where we see the cranes up again. Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. Appreciate it.
Sean Hayworth, Todd Littlefield, and Holloway Huntley. Sean is online. Sean, you can go ahead.
Council members, thank you for hearing my testimony today. I'm Sean Hayworth with Portland House Works. We're a small infill builder and developer, building between twenty-five and thirty detached middle housing cottage community units per year for sale. I think the most concerning statistic for me in all of this was that over the past year, eight-hundred-and-eighteen market-rate housing units were constructed, the lowest in ten years. I don't believe that anyone can argue that that number's dismal for a city of our size. We are woefully under-producing housing, and we've got to incentivize builders to come back to Portland. I ask, I ask the question, where are the builders? I know there's a number that are on this call and sitting here before council, but I think there's a lot that have left the city, too. It's simply a really challenging town to build in, and we need to create incentives that motivate people to come back to Portland to build. This is a huge step in the right direction. I believe financially incentivizing builders to come back will encourage just that, and I think we can't stop there. We've got to take a look at the permit review process, we've got to investigate expedite permit reviews, and simply ease the burdens that are placed on developers and builders in this town. This is a great place. It's the only town that we, Portland House Works, build and develop in. We believe in it, and we'd like to, like to continue to build here. Personally speaking, we have four projects that this would dramatically, in fact, affect. Three of them are detached, single-family home projects, and one of them is a twelve-plex that's been in the permit hopper for a couple of years. It's ready to issue. As soon as this gets approved, we will go ahead and pull that permit and begin construction on that twelve-plex. Lastly, the one thing I want to add is, I know it's not slated to be approved or to go into effect until October. If there's any way to expedite that, I'd love to see that happen sooner. We have a number of projects that we could pull tomorrow if this were, if this were ready to go. Thank you, council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Sean. Todd, you want to go ahead?
Todd Littlefield, District One. I just came here to basically do a fifteen-second "support this," but from what I heard, the presentation from the city is lacking a few things. But from what I heard, the presentation from the city is lacking a few things. First of all, we've got 7,300 units in the pipeline and this is capped out of 5,000. So you're going to exclude 2,300 plus any new units that could be built in the next three years. So I'm asking for that 5,000 cap to be removed and I'll explain why later. Also, the 2,500 expected over the next three years, I think that's pretty rosy. I don't see that happening. I think that's unrealistic. And so why, so also what's missing from the presentation is, and I think would be extremely helpful, is to know the break even from if we do nothing to if we do something. And I'm guessing that break even is about six years. And after six years, the revenue that the city will get from this proposal is huge. I mean, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars a year after about six years. So I think that's important and I'm not sure why those statistics are not, were not part of that. And those benefits will last for 70, 80, 90 years, 100-plus years, as long as those projects are still standing. So developers do not pay SDCs. Renters and homeowners pay them. SDCs are an impediment to developing for new starts. Let's see, please. So this is top of the list for what can be done to spur housing? No question about it. There's other things that can be done. This is top of the list. This is most important. This is a no-brainer. I definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, please.
Hello, councilors. I'm Holloway Huntley, District 4 resident. I also am a general contractor. I've had a design build firm here in Portland called Environs for 15 years. So very much the little guy out of everyone else who's testified. There are a lot of related items that, when compiled, do tell the full story of how high development costs are here. But I'm going to just focus on this particular topic. Additionally, I did serve on a JAC, the Development Review Advisory Committee, for three years, testified on RIPS several years ago. And I'm also the Board Chair at the Rebuilding Center, just to give a shout out to one of our favorite places here. So I wanted to touch on three experiences that I have with and am having with the impact of SDC fees. One is I build a lot of ADUs and when we waive those SDC fees for ADUs, I mean, my phone started ringing twice as much. So it seems like a proven success measure. Two, I had a potential client call me who wanted to buy a new lot in southwest Portland and I told her how much my permit was for my property that I just built a couple of years ago there, which was $143,000, about 35 of which was SDC fees. But the call dropped, so that was, she hung up on me after I told her that. No, she didn't. She just was completely speechless because she's coming from Texas and pays $2,000 for, you know, a 4,000 square foot house for permits. And the third item is that I am, I have three permits in review right now, approved to issue. I submitted them in 2022 and then was like, how am I going to afford to build these? So I, it was also an MHLD went through and so it was just a little bit of a complicated time. But I picked them back up once I heard rumors that this might happen. Two of them are under the Portland Housing Bureau Affordable Housing Program and I'm not going to move those out of that program because of this. So that came up earlier as something that people might do. I'm not going to do that. It's important to me to keep them designed as they are and as an offering to people in that program. But, but the one which isn't is sitting there with a $32,000 SDC fee waiting for me to pay and I just don't, I just don't know if it's going to work out. So I'm interested in council supporting and passing this and doing it before October 1st because who likes digging in the fall or the winter, which lasts for eight months here? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes testimony.
Thanks, everybody who came. Appreciate you taking the time. With that, Donnie, I'll invite you and Christina back up. And colleagues, I will look for conversation up here and questions. Counselor Green, you're first in the queue.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for everyone who gave their perspective. I'm curious if one of the developers could come back up and answer a question on labor costs in the project? If anyone's comfortable doing that?
Maybe pose the question and see who wants to take the pick.
Okay, so to doing this, and one of the benefits is you induce labor income because you have jobs. My understanding is that the hard costs of a building for a smaller one are about 50% labor. And I'm wondering if anyone would be willing to kind of give me a sense of, of how many, how many guys might be on one of those jobs so we can kind of calculate some of those benefits? Come on up.
I see a taker.
Yeah.
Sort of. Anselm Fusco, again. So a couple of things. First, if we think about our typical, you know, let's say it's a 200-plus unit building, that's around $100 million of total project cost. Of that, around 75% is reliably spent locally. Architects and engineers, construction, the contractor that you hire, as well as the various fees, permitting, permitting fees, SDC fees, et cetera. Swagging, I would say that of that $100 million, you know, maybe somewhere on the order of 60 million of that is construction cost, plus or minus. Rule of thumb is that about half of that number is labor. So if you have a construction contract, and this varies across a lot of different things, but as a, as a fat pencil rule, if you take your total hard cost, which is just the, the cost to actually build the building outside of architects and engineers, et cetera. You know, that about 50% of that is the, the labor and about 50% of that is the materials.
Thank you. That's kind of what I thought. And so we, it's not just about jump-starting housing production and getting more units. It's about doing something with a lever that we have right now at a very low cost to potentially induce a bunch of labor income, of which the dollars would flow in our community.
It's labor, it's property taxes, it's, it's all of the things that come with getting that, getting our sector going again.
Thank you. And colleagues, I think you guys understand that I support this one. I would be interested in a conversation about moving the effective bid up forward if that's the road we're going to go down. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Green. I'll go to Counselor Fertogini.
Thank you. You know, as you were giving the presentation, it's clear that there are enough or almost enough, if we discount the units that might not be affected by this proposal, permits in the pipeline to meet that 5,000 unit cap. And yet, we're talking about a timeline that was intentionally built to be long enough, it looks like, for new things to come into the pipeline. And I'm wondering if you can speak to that timeline a little bit and help me understand if we have almost as many units in the pipeline as we'd like to see built, why we have a long enough timeline to account for new things coming in as well?
Yeah, I'll just start by saying, Counselor, thank you for the question. I think I alluded to it earlier. We don't, we acknowledge that there are a number of projects that have much bigger financial feasibility gaps than this alone can fill. And so of course, we hope that broader market conditions improve and interest rates fall and there's our concerns from tariffs and all the things that will allow the full 7,000 units in our pipeline to move forward. We didn't know that that was a reasonable assumption to make. And so we did not expect as part of this change that all those 7,000 units would actually come into fruition. And so that left room for both a portion of those to move forward as well as some space for, for new demand to come in.
Thanks for the question, Council President. I might offer this as well, along with the projects that are in the pipeline that you heard from today that would, this would get from red to green as far as go. What this also is doing is sending a signal to potential investors that now, even though the projects are a little bit larger, that take a little bit more time to build, you heard this as well, you know, three to four years. It's not that the SDC waiver alone is going to get them to feasibility. It's that that's a signal to other potential investors and lenders that, okay, this project is likely to pencil out. And the city is also actually working to, to bridge that gap. And that's really important. That's a signal to the marketplace that we don't want to lose by just keeping it really to a tight three-year construction window. So this extension that you're seeing is going to give our development partners and builders an opportunity to sort of essentially pick up the phone and say, hey, Portland's doing this. Can you meet us halfway to bridge this gap that we're experiencing our feasibility? The last thing I'll just offer on this is that some of the higher density units we're going to be looking for in Portland to hit our goals require a little bit more runway to do everything from design to land the properties, of course. But frankly, they're penciling out. So this is just an example of us trying to meet our housing producers where they're at. And this is for, for certain product type, this is what they need.
And on the executed construction agreement that you talked about as an option, how long do those usually state construction timeline will take? I'm trying to get a sense of how long the, the tail is on construction before we actually see these units come online.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. So referring to that second option that we alluded to in the ordinance, those admittedly can vary in length. But frankly, most, most lenders aren't going to want to have their dollars out in the wild without a return quickly. But I would just say, to your point, I guess, to where the question's going, that can be open-ended and we don't see them last longer than 10 years. But I mean, I would say that, you know, a three to five window seems, you know, can be reasonable.
Okay. I saw some vigorous, head-shaking no when you said 10 years and yes when you said three to five from the back of the room as well. Chair, I have another question, but it's a very different direction. Do you want me to wait and give others a chance first or?
Yeah, let's go to Counselor Ives first and I'll come back to you. Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of questions. And so I guess maybe we're taking turns and I'll come back around. But let me start here. Can you talk about how we're measuring success? Is it simply the number of houses that we're, are going to get built? And what will we do to pivot if we're not as successful as we hope in springing the development? Is there some kind of process for reevaluation within these next three years? Like, how are we going to be measuring this and documenting its success and having discussions or checkpoints if it's not as successful?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. So the goal is 5,000 units, you know, in the issuance in three years. I would say that that is the target because, and even then, we are going to be below our target for this, for the city as guided by the housing needs analysis that the state compelled us to produce. I think we're talking about outcomes. We're looking for projects that have been sort of in this kind of purgatory of getting out the door because of financing to go out the door. So things in the pipeline get permitted that we wouldn't normally have seen. You heard a few of those today. Second is projects that are going to be new that wouldn't have been considered. So we're going to start seeing more projects coming into the city that have stalled out or frankly, just weren't even of interest to investors and builders. But this isn't the only thing that we are going to be doing to spur housing production. Later this summer, council will be looking at an alignment project that many bureaus have been working on to, to address some of the inconsistencies in our code. We're going to continue to implement our housing production strategy. These are all in concert, working together. So I think we'll be able to see who's taking advantage of the SDC as a, as a measure of if this particular intervention was effective. But hopefully, we're doing a lot of things that, that are going to start to blend that general housing production in the city goes up. And we have goals for the city, so getting back on track is going to be the larger goal. And the last thing I'll say about the calibration, in the event that this spurs incredible housing production and we hit, for some reason, 5,000 units in a short amount of time, I think that's a good problem to contemplate and we look forward to coming back in front of this body to figure out what we do next if that happens. So let's hope that we are wildly successful.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about when this waiver ends, whether it's at the 5,000 or the three-year mark. What do we think is going to happen? And let me suss this out a little bit. So what do we foresee being the conversations that we have with developers ahead of the waiver ending? What other conditions do we need to change within these next three years so that the waiver ending doesn't result in just a sudden halt in construction if this is successful? So talk me through, you know, what goes on with, you know, approaching that waiver limit and how we are, what are the other conditions, right? Because as we've heard, it's not just the SDC waivers. So I guess I'm trying to see how we're coupling this kind of policy with the other things that developers are saying are their roadblocks and are we prepared to discuss those ahead of the waiver ending?
Yeah, great question, Counselor. Again, let's start with the things that are directly in our control, right? So we'll continue to improve our permitting processes. We're going to continue to evaluate and improve our code, get rid of those redundancies and those conflicts. I think you're going to start seeing, you know, with RECAP and CAP as alluded to, our essential city project, there's going to be code alignment that comes in that you all have to contemplate on how to improve to the best, you know, ability that we have today and the brightest minds going forward, what are we doing to improve our regulations essentially? And then you start to take a step out and say, well, what comes up next with financing? So we're currently, we're done with our two housing bonds, but TIF comes online. And so we have our community action plans that are starting to form and those are going to shape housing production in the, in the six districts. So you'll start to see a little bit more there. And then lastly, there are things outside of our direct control, larger market factors, labor costs, et cetera. And what are we doing to partner and with the state to think about how we, you know, ensure that we have that activation continually happening? The, the SDC moratorium is just to get this engine going. But the reality is there's a lot of larger factors outside of SDCs that we're going to need to work with external partners on to realize. It's not just the city's, you know. In fact, outside of affordable housing production, we really are creating tools in the toolkit for people to use. But people have to use them. And if they're not, then we have to continue to reevaluate those.
And then a quick follow-up to that. I mean, what happens in a scenario where maybe one project beats another one, like beats to the punch as far as like, they are the project that's going to get to the last 5,000 and we're ahead of the three-year timeline? You know, is it your expectation that after that, like it's very first come, first served? I don't know what first come, first served means in this route because there's so many different layers to the process. But would you foresee then that that person that maybe didn't make the cut would just simply have to revert back to paying the fees? Or what happens in that kind of scenario?
So this is, to be clear, Counselor, the question is, what happens if you have two projects at the end and they're like units 4,995?
I guess. I'm just like, what's going to, if you encounter the scenario where now you're at that 5,000, there are other people still in the pipeline? It kind of speaks to my earlier question, but I guess I'm just trying to see what the scenario, how that would play out.
We, we've contemplated that. So the, in the code, the hard, let's say, target isn't the 5,000. It's the, it's the deadline. So there is a scenario we're going to be approaching, currently codified as September 30th, 2028, that if we get to that point, that we're already at 5,000 units, we'll be able to communicate that out. We've actually discussed the potential of having a dashboard so people come in and can see where we're at in issuance. Because remember, the, the moratorium starts with you getting issued a permit, but it doesn't lock in until you hit that one-year marker, right? So we'll be, we'll need to be able to communicate to potential builders the availability of that capacity. But the reality is it's the deadline that really matters, that September 30th. So is there a scenario where we get to 5,000 and it spills over to 5,100? Perhaps. And we can contemplate that in admin rules, which we've been targeting. But the reality is, is that if we get to that scenario where we're actually at the cap, that's probably a good signal that we're starting to build back housing faster.
To be clear, you're saying that the three-year deadline is the harder deadline than the 5,000? So there's potential that, and what, what is that process? Is that something we need to re-approve to say 5,001 needs a new SDC? I don't understand.
No, yeah, the, in the code, it's the date is the hard. It's like the ordinance that's codified is the date.
The three years.
The three years.
Okay. I'm just noting that that was not what was communicated to me, that it was one, it was like whichever one is first. So that tells me something different. I'm not necessarily against it, but I'm just saying that's not clear in how it's been communicated.
5,000 units is really hard to implement from a, from a practical perspective, from a, just a code, how the planning, or excuse me, the Permitting Bureau and the manages projects. So from a, like assurance of implementation, the date was the, the most sound way to do that.
It just gives me pause because for me, I think that the moratorium is important, that there is a clear line of when it ends. And to me, that sounds like there isn't one as clear as I thought. So I'm going to ponder that for a minute, but.
It's September 30th, right now in the code, September 30th, 2028, is the, is the hard stop of issuance. And again, it's only guaranteed if those, if those qualifiers are hit. So even if somebody pulls a permit, if they don't hit the one-year, you know, foundation or have that agreement in place, then that was, the moratorium is not applied. or have that agreement in place, then that was, the moratorium is not applied.
Yeah. I mean, I'm supporting this waiver. It's just my support really does hinge on the moratorium factor. So that's why I'm asking these detailed questions. So I don't know that I feel answered right now, but I'm going to ponder that for a minute. Thanks.
Counselor Novick, thanks.
I'm with Counselor Green. I'm a yes, and I'm curious as to whether we can move up the effective date, particularly as I've heard some concerns that people might delay pulling their permits for the next few months, waiting for October 1st to kick in. Is there any reason why we couldn't move it up to August 1st, for example?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. I think that depends in part on the schedule for full council meetings for the summer and how quickly y'all decide to take action on this and when the next available opportunity is for it to go to full council. Typically, legislation goes into effect with 30 days after adoption. So, you know, you could imagine a couple of different scenarios for that. I would.
Yes.
Yep.
Counselor answered the question. So Christina alluded to this. Right now, for simplicity and clarity for everybody, October 1 and March 1 are planning implementation dates for code, right? For this particular case, we are contemplating a way to speed that up so it's not October 1. And we've been throwing out August 1 as a commitment that the bureau has been making to we could have something in place. Given the city code that requires a 30-day implementation, we could put something in the code in the ordinance that sits sets August 1 as the target date and figure out a way to to bridge that gap between the effective date and our, whether it be like a hold harmless commitment some way. So we've been PP&amp;D staff, I've been looking at how we may be able to implement it. But I guess the commitment we're making here is if council is interested in us speeding the date, we're we're already actively looking at how to do that.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to Counselor Pertilguini, who thinks on this topic as well.
I actually wanted to ask the question about what Counselor Novak, Counselor Novick just presupposed, which is, are you seeing permit pulls delayed now as we're talking about this from builders who are waiting to see if this goes into effect or not?
Yeah, I don't think we have a PP&amp;D in the room today, but I've anecdotally have heard that there are some people that are. I would say two things. One is that some folks are starting to apply now because they're excited, they heard, and they want to, they want to get their projects started. And then also some anecdotes that people might be waiting to see what happens.
And Counselor, I'd also, Counselor, I'd also offer that prior to even the announcement, the trickle of projects being issued was already starting. So this is a causality correlation moment where, was it already starting before that? Or, and now we're just exacerbating that that pause? Because it was, someone specified, mentioned it earlier. We saw it in our data. We're getting a lot of permits for alterations. We're getting a lot of commercial permits, not a lot of multifamily housing production. That's something that we can articulate going back into the early spring, still single-family homes, multifamily, or excuse me, middle housing. So correlation and causality is sort of difficult. But then to the point that Christina made, yeah, people definitely said, great, can't wait to see this waiver go into effect. I'll take advantage of it, you know, effective date, whatever.
I appreciate you not making assumptions about correlation and causation. Thank you. I know we too often do. We too often, in policymaking, make those assumptions. So I appreciate you being cautious there. I do think that waiting until October 1 feels a little bit dangerous to me, that we might slow things down even more. And I'm wondering, Chair, about moving forward something that would, rather than the implementation deadline that's currently here, which I believe says a building permit has not been issued before October 1 as a qualification, if we were to change that and say something about has not been issued by the effective date, which would make this go into effect 30 days after passage.
Yeah. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, but I'll just say, I think you guys should work on some language and propose that amendment here, and I think we should pass it that way out of committee, which is under paragraph J, paragraph 2, section A2, and getting rid of the October 1 deadline. So I would be in favor as well of going just in a normal 30 days after it gets passed from from council. Putting myself in the queue, going along a little bit to, I want to unpack some of the stuff that Counselor Avalos was was bringing up, that September 30, 2028 is is the deadline in the most true, underlined, bolded way we can say deadline, like the moratorium deadline. If if that's the case, why why not? Or what would be the risk of saying that there is no limit to the number of units who could get in under that deadline? I feel like if you came back in three years and said, gee, golly, we had 15,000 units get built in this three, that we'd be cheering. So to to some of the testimony's point, I know we, a little bit, but why not just eliminate the number and keep the moratorium deadline of three years? We're in an arms race for housing.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. Frankly, it's it's the burden we put on our infrastructure bureaus. Those development charges are real. We feel like the commitment that the bureaus have made to this point is is very generous, and we're going to sort that out still in terms of the impacts. But I want to just flag this. If we get to a point that within the, say, in '27, sometime in September of 2027, we're already at 5,000 units issued out the door, we'll probably be back here having that conversation of what we do next. Do we extend the number or do we do, does council call it then? That will be a good problem to have, Counselor. So I just want to say that we've already contemplated this scenario, that in the event that 5,000 hits sooner than anticipated, we would be back in front of you saying, what do we do?
Okay.
What's your plan?
That's really helpful because what you what you didn't say is that you just moved the deadline. The deadline stays September 2028. And if we find ourselves in a situation where we have a good problem to solve, let's have that conversation. But that wasn't a deadline one. So the moratorium always has an ending date, and I appreciate that, having come from your chair before and having an understanding of the importance of SDCs. But I also appreciate some of the testimony and others of why why limit. So what I'm hearing there is this is more about capacity, and if we've if we see ourselves succeeding so well, we're open to more capacity. Colleagues, I mean, I'm I'm obviously quite supportive. It's not often you get to, in the first six months of a term, get to work on something you campaigned on. And I appreciate, from a staff perspective, the mayor's perspective, the housing group's perspective, and the governor's perspective, that a lot of us talked about SDCs are a problem, but you all have put the meat on the bones. And that that has really come together in a good package, and I appreciate the the versions of this as it's gone through the pipeline. So I just want to say thank you very much on that. And also, for a few folks, and Counselor Green, your line of questions about the labor, 75% of what gets built on a project generally finds itself in local people, local business, local work, local, local, local. And I think that's important, too, considering how much of this equation involves national finance, right? Housing is built with national finance, but it's put up by local workers. And I think that you all have done enough uncovering of the different wrinkles that has helped us tell that story in a really great way. So I'm quite supportive. Counselor Green, do you have another question or amendment?
I think there's an amendment being drafted now that I'm going to support that moves the timeline earlier. But I want to say that this summer is really, really important, I think, not just for our city, but our region. There's a lot of cost risk with every day. It seems like there's a new tariff announced and repealed or announced, repealed, you know? And so the more certainty we can give to the lenders on this, I think that we're going to increase the likelihood. We heard from the gentleman that got a term sheet because of the speculation that council might take this up based upon an October 1 deadline. And so I just want to reinforce that this is probably the, for less than $100 million in foregone SDCs, we're, we're going to unlock, my staff just calculated, over $400 million in labor income across these projects. That's, that's a huge piece of the recovery that we have. So I'm going to support an amendment that comes forward that has an earlier date on this.
Thanks. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I want to just put a finer point on some of the questioning that Counselor Avalos was going down the line of and that you, Chair, brought up as well around the 5,000 new units, because I didn't campaign on waiving SDCs. I, in fact, am a very strong supporter of SDCs, and part of my support has been based on this being time-limited and the fact that the need right now is so great that I think it justifies a waiver that at other points in time I probably would not support. And I just want to make sure that we are all clear about what the language is here because the ordinance very clearly states that the purpose of the subsection is to create 5,000 new units of housing. But 5,000 new units of housing is not listed as any sort of cap or time that we stop or time that we are asking our bureaus to come back to us and ask us to reconsider this. As far as I can tell, and while I'd love to have you all come back and check in with us partway through, as far as I can tell, there is no requirement to that. And what we are approving, I just want to make sure we all know this, and I'm willing to support this, but I want to go into it eyes wide open, is a three-year moratorium period with no caveats or exceptions to that, other than those that are around the the types of units being built. So I, it still sounded like there was some confusion in how that answer was coming in, and I want to make sure that we're really clear. I would like to propose an amendment.
Please.
Chair, I would propose that we amend section J to A2 of the code or of the proposed code to say a building permit has not been issued before the effective date of this ordinance and will not be issued after September 30th, 2028. And Rebecca, I'm sending that to you right now.
Thanks. Doing a staff check, does that seem implementable? Oh, and here comes an attorney. So we've already ruffled some feathers. Let's do it.
No, no, just to Lindley Reese, for the record, chief deputy city attorney. Because the ordinance itself is not part of the code for implementation purposes for staff, it might be easier to say the effective date of this subsection J rather than the effective date of the ordinance, if if that works.
Change my amendment if my seconder is willing to say a building permit has not been issued before the effective date of subsection J of this section of the code and will not be issued after September 30th, 2028.
Couldn't be happier to accommodate this.
Okay. Rebecca and Chris, do you need me to resend that to you, or did you capture that difference? Resend? Okay.
So the intent, because this will matter in our record, the intent is that this is treated like any other ordinance change, which is 30 days after its adoption by the city council. Is that correct, Counselor?
Correct.
Okay. While you send that, I will note, as our city attorney came up, I asked the staff if that was implementable, and they both agreed that it was. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, PP&amp;D will need a little bit of time to kind of get prepped to launch this, but that standard period should be fine.
Could I ask our attorney a question?
Of course.
Before we move to a vote? Are we cleaner to say subsection J of this section of the code? Or are we cleaner to just say effective date of this subsection of the code, since it's within subsection J?
I would, I mean, I think what I'd said, of this subsection J. So it's very clear. And it doesn't need, so it would read, a building permit has not been issued before the effective date of this subsection J.
And will not be issued?
Correct. After September 30.
Okay.
I also think a little cleanup falls in the Scrivener's authority as well, so you'll be fine. Your intent is very clear here. Okay. We have an amendment. It's been seconded. I'm going to look to colleagues if there's any discussion on the amendment. Okay. That will go to a vote, and if we can do a roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Pertilguini?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Green?
Let's build some housing. Aye.
Avalos?
On the amendment?
Yes.
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
So the amendment carries, five to zero. Okay. We're going to continue to have discussion on the overarching code change. I'm not seeing anybody in the queue, which feels good. We've had a lot of practice of being in the queue for hours in the last few weeks, so. Okay. All right. I think we're ready to go to a vote. Well, do I need to get a motion from a colleague for a vote of this amended one to go to the full council with the request to be passed by full council?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Counselor Novick moves, and Counselor Green seconds the ordinance. With that, clerk, if we could have a roll call vote.
Pertilguini?
Aye.
Novick?
Really appreciate the mayor bringing this forward. Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Avalos?
I'm going to be voting yes because I think that this exemption could help move some housing projects that are stuck due to the financing gaps. But I just have to say on the record that $63 million in lost infrastructure revenue is serious, especially for my district that is still waiting on basics. As I stated in my comments, I believe we need to be tracking who's using the exception, what kind of housing it builds, make sure the benefits are shared. And I would like to see some more midpoint evaluation checks. I would like to discuss that further as far as how we're tracking it before this expires. But this, and I believe that this tool has a lot of potential if we stay accountable. So I vote aye.
Zimmerman?
Thank you. I appreciate those comments and everybody's work on this. Again, a deep appreciation to Mayor Wilson, to Governor Kotek, to everybody who sat on the panel to come up with these these suggestions. It was mentioned that we are in, I don't even remember how many times the city has declared a housing emergency, and in my own estimation, we haven't done a lot with it. And so I am deeply appreciative of this. I don't know, and when you represent downtown Portland and some of the most densely populated areas, I don't know that there's a tower high enough for me to walk at. I think it should all be built all the time, everywhere. I, and that's my position. I've always felt that way. And in a world where finance stops good projects, I think we have something that we can do. So for those that came out and testified, also appreciate it. I appreciate the variety of faces that we saw, right? I think somebody mentioned it. I don't like to call myself a developer because on a lot of scales, that word gets used to describe everything from 1,000 units to a single ADU. And I don't think it captures everybody and why they're in the market in terms of creating community, as was said. I also am really proud of this committee and of the staff. I think this is the first example in this form of government, and Ian McKenzie mentioned it, and he took my first talking point away, which is, I don't think this happens in the old form of government. I just don't think it would have. And so this is a great example, moving into a new fiscal year, that where all, all wings, all arms, all things work for the same boss, and you put together a good plan, and I appreciate it, and we're going to pass it. I vote aye.
With five ayes, the ordinance will be referred to full council as amended.
Great. Thank you, colleagues. I am getting an updated script about my closing comments here about something that's changed. Let me review it quickly. Yeah. The the council president is furious with me for letting you clap because now I've set bad precedent for her meetings. You can take it up to her when she's in this chair. Okay, so Chris, help me out if I get it wrong, but in terms of previewing next meeting, we have a discussion coming up on SIP and the finance development options that might exist. So colleagues, I'm going to ask you to both bring your ideas and take the mindset of providing direction for our city finance team so they can return to us with some recommendations on how best to deliver on the SIP resolution. And we'll also be taking a look at some surplus property. And with that, now turning to the rest of my script, looking to my colleagues for any further comments, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.